I'm sorry, I'm late. Um, so called the meeting at six oh five.
I'll need to read the minutes.
And yeah, you wanna read the minutes? That would be great.
Okay, the meeting called to order at six oh, actually, you should be reading them, you're the secretary.
Yeah, I am.
I'm sorry that I figured if you wanted to read them, you know.
If you have a burning desire to read them. Okay.
Sorry, I don't know where my things are.
Meeting called to order at six oh three P M. Present Director Jen Crosby, Vice Chair Kate McMercier, Nita Abbott, Denise Conti, Janice Cook, Helen Hurdow, Terry LaPrada, Michelle Petrus, and Candace Riberro, absent Paula Lepie. Minutes of last month's trustee meeting were read, amended, and accepted as amended. Directors' report, welcome binders for the remainder of the trustees were handed out. Building update, condensation from the air conditioning was dripping from the vents. Jeremy has adjusted all of our settings and taken care of it. Building is now cooler, so there is less condensation. Current statistics update, each month Jen will report the previous month's circulation statistics and will offer fiscal year review each fall. Jen presented a report on the screen showing C W Mars circulating statistics for the month of July. There were a total of six thousand four hundred and fifty-two circulations at the library during the month. To put this into perspective, there were five thousand five hundred and fifty-two in June and four thousand two sixty-six in May. There were also eight hundred and forty-seven items borrowed through Overdrive, the library's digital catalog. The peak times of the week being Tuesday morning until noon, Wednesday morning at opening, and Friday afternoon around four. The library circulated a value of eighty-six thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-one cents, thirteen thousand seventy-one dollars and six cents in items from other libraries, and seventy-three thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-five cents in items from Gramby. Our circulation continues to increase due to the relaxation of COVID-19 restrictions. Non-resident circulation has more than doubled this last year to twenty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine from July first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Hoopla usage update, the library has just gone through the one thousand dollar advance that was put into Hoopla Digital for patrons to borrow electronic media. Since the start of the program in August, twenty twenty-one, library patrons have borrowed four hundred and seventy-nine items with sixty-six patrons using the platform. Going forward, the library will pay monthly as it is less than a hundred times a month, a hundred items a month. Policy work, trustees will vote to update the storm closing policy this month. Eris report, heiress report has been completed, Vice Chair Kate Mercier will sign. Ongoing summer activities, Taking May Crafts for Adults has been very popular in book group meetings through quilting group, ongoing puzzle and coloring page tables. Summer reading programs are winding down, two more weeks of preschool playgroup, Flamingo Find, Reading Buddies, and theme displays on the Titanic and Pirates. Teen Guessing Jar, colored by sticker and Dungeons and Dragons, A New Magic: The Gathering group is in the works. Trustee C D at Florence Bank matures August nineteenth. There is a ten calendar day grace period in which to act on this. Leah provided C D rates from Florence Bank and Capital One for comparison. The C D has thirty-three thousand ninety-one dollars and fourteen cents and makes approximately five dollars per month in interest, currently at zero point two zero percent. Warrants, one thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and fifty-two cents, Go Net Speed, Baker &amp; Taylor in the Library Store, and one thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents, Go Net Speed, Baker &amp; Taylor, Gray House Publishing, Midwest Tape, and the Library Store. Motion made by Terry to accept warrants is presented, seconded, and approved. The current storm closing policy for the library will be updated to read. The Grammy-free public library will be closed due to inclement weather if the town of Gramby closes or at the discretion of the town administrator. Motion made to accept update by Candace, seconded and approved. Corey, Corey checks for library volunteers and employees must be updated every two years. Jen will be updating. C D discussion, discussion ensued about the trustee's C D coming due and what to do with the money. It does not make much in interest and would be more useful to place it in a savings account for use on things that the library needs such as landscaping and computers to be discussed later. Motion made to close C D and move money to savings account, seconded and approved. Other business, Jen reported again that there are about twenty-five computers in the library that are old and unable to be updated any further. This includes staff and patron computers. Jen has bought one new computer this year. Candace made a motion to buy an additional four computers this fiscal year and a minimum of five computers per fiscal year until all are replaced. They will cost approximately a thousand dollars apiece. The money for these computers will come out of the savings account that the C D will be transferred to. Motion seconded and approved. Helen reports that White Hollow Landscaping will prune and trim bushes and trees, weed pruning beds and gardens for fifteen hundred dollars. He will also mulch compost all the gardens, flower beds, for a price of six hundred and fifty dollars. There is no help coming from the town for these services at this time. Motion made by Candace to accept quotes from White Hollow Landscaping for trimming, pruning, weeding, mulching, and composting. This money will come from C D that has termed, motion seconded and approved. Helen also reported on the progress of Alice Stewart's memorial garden. She has not been able to contact the Boy Scouts. They had agreed to build a stone wall around the garden. She did get a quote for twenty-two hundred dollars from Jam Yang, a professional rock wall builder for this work. Approximately fifteen hundred dollars has been donated to this garden, so we need to come up with the remainder. Candace made a motion to accept the quote from Jam Yang to build the wall around Alice's garden. The balance needed for this wall will come from the C D that has termed, seconded and approved. Jan Cook reports that the Big Y is donating books from its business library. She will meet with Jen to determine if any of these would be appropriate for the library. Trustee orientation will be held here at the library on October fourth, twenty twenty-two. A committee is appointed to research job positions, hoping to create two part-time positions in addition to current library staff. The committee consists of Jan Cook, Denise Conti, Nita Abbott, and Jen Crosby. An acknowledgement was sadly made of the passing of Paula Lepie's mom, Jeanette Bolia. A book will be donated to the library in her memory and condolences will be sent. Next trustee meeting September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two at the library. Mass optional, meeting adjourned at seven thirty-three P M, respectfully submitted initial.
Did anybody see anything?
I spent a lot of money that night. I was like, let's go. I was reading it at home and I was like, wow. I just might put down the gavel all the time, all day.
You spent quite a bit of money. But it's good, that's what it's there for.
It's for good cause.
Absolutely.
Does anybody see anything that needed to be amended in the minutes?
So one thing I had a question about is, do we always have to say who made the motion? Because I noticed some of them.
But you don't have to say who seconded it.
Some of them in here.
According to Robert's Rules of Order.
Some in here didn't say who made a motion. I'd have to.
And that's probably because I didn't know.
I was like, did I say that too? Did I say that too?
I would have not written that down fast enough.
Now, motion made by Terry, seconded and approved.
Right.
Motion made by Candace, seconded and approved.
The seconded doesn't have to be named.
Motion made to close the C D, it didn't say then.
Yeah, that's probably the one I missed.
I think it was one of you two that made that motion.
It's probably me.
Probably you.
It was your idea, I think it was your idea, Michelle.
I put the seconds in too when I typed it up.
Should we?
I don't know, it just doesn't.
Do we need to, do we have to? Michelle, you say we don't have to.
Well, according to the updated Robert's Rules of Order, you don't have to put the seconds in.
Okay.
But you have to put the, you know, the important thing is not what is said, but what is done.
Very nice to say.
That's what you wanna get in your minutes.
Well, I think it was like three times that it said motion was seconded and approved.
I think you did a really good job.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
With the amount of information that you had to type up, yes.
It was like, wow, this is really, this is how it all happened, this is great. I feel like I was there again, reading it.
So, other than that, so we just have to make sure that we put, we made the motion?
Who makes the motion from now on? I will stop everything if I miss.
That's okay, you did a great job like with everything that was written on it.
There was a lot of information in that meeting.
So does anybody wanna make a motion to accept the?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
As amended?
Did we amend anything?
Did you, did you add that part where you made that motion?
Well, except I still don't know who did it.
We're saying you did, it was you or I.
Oh, all right.
You or I were the only one that was spending money that night.
All right, so I did it that night. Okay, I got it.
As amended.
I'll secondish.
All in favor?
Hi.
Um, I wanna just say thank you, I appreciate the fact that you guys ended up doing that for my mother, for her passing. She would really appreciate it because Jen was saying that it was large print and so she would be just tickled to have that.
Well, she used to come here with you, right? She used to, yeah, I remember.
So I appreciate it, thank you for doing that.
Okay, so now it's your, our lovely director's report.
Thank you, okay, I will try not to kill you guys with information tonight. Um, the Baker &amp; Taylor Company that we use, we order all of our books through them and they also happen to host the software that we put all of our information in for the state for our heiress report and our financial report. They were down for probably the past three weeks.
Wow.
They, I don't know if it was some kind of.
We get those emails from the state, but.
Yeah, it was bad, it was really bad. I'm all caught up now with all my ordering, which is wonderful. They just opened it back up last week. And the financial report is open again. I haven't started it yet, but it's due on October seventh, so I have plenty of time.
Sorry, which report did you say?
Uh, this is our financial report. Um, it's not quite an October problem, but it's like a late September problem, so I will get started on that pretty soon. But everything's back up and running in case anybody didn't catch that. Um, so jumping right into our policies, I gave everyone a copy of our behavior policy and I wrote and read a couple of the ideas, because I did, you know, work on it a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, give us a little bit of a starting point. Has everybody had a chance to read it? Okay, a lot of the ones that I found, because I had looked on that website that I had quoted to you guys, the Boston Public Library, which, you know, they're much bigger scale than we are, North Hampton, Springfield Libraries, I kinda looked at all of their policies and they were very short and sweet. Ours is a little wordy, which is okay. The introduction, instead of this paragraph that says rules of behavior, A, like I was thinking we could just replace that whole thing with this suggested introduction. And the one that I suggested adds a little more inclusion than we had before, the fact that we're a judgment-free space, shared by everyone in the community, that everyone will receive impartial, helpful, friendly patron service is really important to us, being safe, healthy, free of harassment, intimidation, threats, all of that. I thought that, well, I kind of pulled all the things I liked from each one that I read and put it together in this one. Does anybody have any questions about that? Does anyone wanna change anything about that?
So the top part where it says behavior policy slash patron behavior policy, it, it didn't say that before and you feel that that patron part of it is necessary?
Yes.
Because it speaks specifically to patrons' behavior?
That's kind of what I was thinking and looking at other libraries and what they called their policy. A couple of them called them acceptable use policies, but I kinda felt like that was a little, a little bit of a gray area. But either just behavior policy, like short and sweet, or patron behavior policy, I think.
Oh, there's two, or there one or the other, oh, I see, okay, okay.
One or the other, yeah, we kinda have to pick, like, are we gonna just shorten it to behavior policy or should we make it the patron behavior policy?
So does this, does this apply to the employees as well and the volunteers?
Um, this is.
They're patrons, it does, which I'm sure they are.
Yeah, like this.
I know, but if they're, if they're in here not as a patient, but as a employee or a volunteer.
As a worker bee.
As a worker, which we have different policies for staff, which we know is.
Okay, oh, all right, okay, so this is strictly a patron behavior.
From the town. Yeah, so this is, and maybe that would help make it a little more clear. And this is something that I have handed to people if we have had an issue, which has been very, very rarely, but, um, so try to think of it from that point of view. Like if I were handing this to someone in the library and saying, this is our policy and this is where you, you know, violated it, um, this is what I would like, looking at from their perspective.
So I think patron behavior policy is better, because it's more specific to groups.
Well, so one of the things that I did notice in the older one was those who fail to conform will be required to, well, it says to leave. But, I mean.
Locked in my office will be taken out. Just kidding.
Um, but it doesn't say anything about that, like.
It does in the, the end, like on the very last page, there is, um, definition of problem behavior, disruptive behavior, and then it will say at the bottom, at the discretion of the director, repeat offenders will be banned from the library for varying lengths of time. For minors, a parent or guardian will be contacted. Um, a lot of libraries didn't have this much information in there, which we can kinda get to as we go through it, if we wanna talk about maybe chopping that down a little bit. But it's not bad to also have it clearly labeled that if you do these things, there are these clear consequences that, which I've only once in my entire career had to enforce, so it's not too bad.
I did love the suggested, suggested introduction, I did like that, I liked that.
I like the, the, the play, the play of affection.
Yeah, you know, it is so funny, I was looking through and I'm like, that's a little old school.
It is, because I'm sure that this was a meeting place at one time for young people to meet, to see each other outside of school.
Our biggest problem in our old building, you had to think about where our teen space was in the old building. When you first walked in, with, and this is like going way back, when you first walked in, we had that little teen space there and just like a little tiny chair where they used to like sit on each other's laps and be all cute and adorable as like people are walking in and having to step around them. And then we had it down in the basement in that little hallway, same thing like right in front of little kids, here are these teens like making out and stuff, which.
Not that I have any knowledge of that.
Who would do something like that? Um, but now, what's nice about how we're set up is they have their very own room and it's a straight shot from the circ desk, so how much trouble are they really gonna get into? And plus, in a way, public displays of affection are now kind of seen as, you know, expression and who am I?
It's better than something else.
Better than shooting each other.
Right.
And I, and I can see them from where we are and I think that it's kind of a little bit of an old fashioned rule. I don't think anyone's gonna go too crazy making out in front of the library director. So, yeah, so I put that in there.
So the suggested introduction, is that going to remove something?
It would take the place of A.
Okay.
So that whole thing would just chop it out, we'll just put in this short little paragraph and then we'll have the general behavior guidelines, the animals that still holds true, unless it's an, you know, an assisting animal. Um, the audio equipment, playing audio equipment so that others can hear is not allowed. And the bicycles thing, it's not really a problem. You know, I think in our old building, we, we had more of a problem with people, like if people tried to bring their bicycle in with them, there was no space. Like, we haven't really had anyone try to bring a bicycle in. Some libraries still have that in their policy. So that's, I don't know if you guys think that's something that needs to continue to be in our policy. We could always cut it out and see if we ever do have a problem with it, we could put it back in, but I think most people know where their, is there a bicycle thing out there?
Yeah.
I remember, yeah, that's true.
So I think most people know where their bicycle goes, for the most part.
And also like, you know, in times like the eighties, growing up, we'd go for a bike everywhere to get it. So that's a different, it's a different time.
Yeah.
You don't see too many, no.
Parents didn't drive their kids everywhere, you know.
Yeah, it really is different. Yeah. Yeah, so we could take that out if everyone's okay with.
Pick up the bicycle?
Taking out the bicycles. And then the cell phones, we've more recently updated that to say it's not prohibited, but loud voices, ringtones that are disruptive. And I was suggesting that we add cell phones or other technology, because people now have all kinds of stuff that's noisy and we're happy to have them use it as long as they use their earbuds, which I think for the most part, people do now. It's sometimes cute to have to go out and help someone if they don't know how to do it and their music all of a sudden starts blasting out of a computer, like a little scary, scares everyone. Um, but other than that, it's not typically a problem. And then the children, like where's the C children's room use and rules conduct.
There is something specific to that.
We do have that specific and I was going to tackle that next month.
Perfect.
And I will see C Janice on that and get all of her thoughts and, you know, anything that she thinks has changed or, you know, something that would maybe apply more now for next month. Let's see, communication, rudeness, insulting language, profanity, raised voices, that's the same. The misuse of computer equipment is a Massachusetts general law, so that basically stays the same, damages as well, disturbances as well, and then drugs and alcohol. And then the feet.
I had a discuss feet on my notes.
I know, it was like, we really do have a heading called feet.
Where did this come from? It is.
We did, we updated it in twenty sixteen, so I don't know why no one caught on to feet being strange, but as a safety and health precaution, no bare feet are allowed. I was suggesting we change that to entering the library barefoot without a shirt and, and/or with overpowering body odor or perfume so as to interrupt library service.
So, the whole perfume thing is, yes, I, I hear what you're saying, but if you don't say that this is a perfume-free environment, do you know what I mean? How can you say, hey, you're a little too stinky today, you gotta go?
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, it's, it's.
I, I know what you're trying to say, but if you don't have a specific, like, we have a work environment that has those kinds of things, you know, if you don't.
Yeah, it's definitely not something that we can.
What about making like some kind of signage, saying, like to have it, have it there?
Well, I guess that would be, that, that would be a town thing that you'd have to discuss with the town.
Yes. I don't believe so.
Like for the office, any of the office buildings, like.
I don't think so. This I find is a very library-specific issue that some people do come in with very offensive odors one way or the other.
For real, yeah.
Yeah.
Have you ever had to do anything?
I haven't had to do anything, like again, knock on wood, we've been very lucky here. But it is something that I know a lot of libraries put in their policy just to kinda cover them, that if someone does come in, like say a volunteer comes into work and they have this really, you know.
If you are near an area that's got a heavy population of homeless people, they come to the library as a refuge.
Right, absolutely.
Serious problem in California.
And, you know, people have allergies and sometimes overpowering perfume can be an allergen. Uh, it's not something that we've ever had to enforce, but I think having it there as kind of a little bit of a backup that if we ever did have to say something to someone, because you have to be extremely tactful and gentle when you tell someone that unfortunately, their perfume.
Out.
And in, in most places, people are in and they're out, you know, so we don't typically, and we have a nice big building now that it's not as much of a problem, but it's nice to have it in there as just a little backup, just in case.
If you feel strongly about that, then I think we should leave.
I wanna read something from an attorney, someone asked us to a public library.
Go for it.
Said that, it says, there is a large array of case law, academic articles, industry guidance, and news coverage on the subject regulating smells in libraries, specifically the smells of people and/or their belongings in the libraries. Based on those materials, and in particular the case law, my answer to the question legally, is this allowed, has to be yes. With a carefully considered policy, carefully followed, barring library patrons based on their disturbing odor has been ruled to be legal, just like barring other factors that disturb the operations of the library, noisy and runny can be. Uh, but just because a library can bar disturbing odors, it means I always advise my clients to do it.
Yes, okay. So I think in a very specific situation.
And that's what you put in here, so it's to interrupt library service, you know, if this is severe enough to.
Yeah, right, if we have like a group of people, like, yeah, there's a group of people studying and like they can't get away from this person that is making their allergies act up, like then that's something that we maybe would consider, but it would be an extreme case.
But this is like more open library where the other one was smaller and more compact where you would notice it more, but this one, I feel that, yeah.
Exactly, like we might be able to more like gently ask someone, you know, would you like to use our history room for your studying? Or if someone's offended by an odor, they can go use the history room and close the door. So I feel like we have a little more leeway to fix that situation without having to bar anyone from the building, but, you know.
And it says you can create scent-free zones in your library where any perceptible odors, moldous, and use of substances associated with chemical sensitivities are as minimized as possible.
Perfect.
Now that you have to do that.
Right, but, that's great, it's good to know. So yeah, that, that, um, it's interesting that would have to be there, but, um, where was that? Okay, so yeah, that was for feet. I don't know what we wanna call that little subheading, but it shouldn't be feet.
Feet, hygiene?
Hygiene.
A like appropriate.
Cause it, cause it goes beyond feet now.
Appropriate attire?
I, I think hygiene is, is pretty good.
Hygiene, I think, I think that's good.
Yeah, hygiene, yeah, cause like wearing shoes.
Appropriate hygiene, I don't know, would you say that, appropriate hygiene?
Appropriate, what about appropriate attire and hygiene?
Yeah.
Is that too much?
No, I think you're talking about attire.
Killing it.
With the shirt and everything, so.
Right.
And shoes, no, no service?
We kinda just like throw it all in one little sentence. Don't smell that and wear your shoes.
And a shirt.
Yes, please. Luckily, I haven't had that problem either, but you never know. Um, and then food and drink, um.
I'll find out if I hurt now.
Except at designated times or in designated areas, so you're good.
So even if I had like, um, like a top or something, like a water bottle with a top, because I think that was brought up a couple of years ago.
Just not around computers.
Yes, so my main thing, and I'm, I'm not sure how Janice feels about it in the children's room, I think it's tough, especially with like little kids around, so you have, you have like say a Dunkin' Donuts cup with a flimsy plastic and a little kid just, you know, all over the books. But we do have that little cafe space that we allow people to, you know, we'll say like, you can leave your drink there and come back and grab it whenever you want, um, as long as people don't have it at the computers, which maybe we should say that, that they're not allowed at computers.
You really shouldn't, because I think that's a big rule, like you ruin a computer like that.
Yeah.
Right, cause like if people have it at this table here, the only thing you're ruining is your own paperwork, your own laptop, you know. That's your own perspective, like your own prerogative if you wanna come in with your Dunkin' and, um, not be a disaster, that would work out fine. So maybe, um, food and drink, hmm.
Just like materials. And computers. Food and drinks and beverages will not be allowed.
Um. Hmm.
Well, maybe you could say because of the potential damage to library materials, food and/or beverages are not allowed in the library, um, especially around the computer area. However, at designated areas.
However, there are designated areas.
But patiently, you know.
Leave that open.
Why couldn't, maybe you could just, because of the potential damage to library materials and computers, food and/or beverages are not allowed in the library except at.
No designated, designated times.
Why can't you just say designated areas?
Designated areas, no times, yeah.
Excepted designated, designated, no, forget the times.
Except at, in designated areas.
Except in designated.
Except in designated areas, right.
Perfect, and then that way, I, when they come in, we can tell them, you can have your drink at, at a table, you can have your drink at those tables.
But to specify, I think we should specify to add, add around the computers.
But you're gonna specify, right?
Yeah.
Because of the potential damage to library materials and computers.
Especially computers.
Food and/or beverages are not allowed in the library except in designated areas.
Or designated use of.
Okay, so because of the potential damage to library materials and computers,
Yeah.
food and beverages are not allowed in the library excepted, except in designated areas.
In designated areas. We can get rid of that last part, patrons may come. Um but we can get rid of that last part, patrons may consume food outside like.
No, you don't.
No.
They they can figure it out themselves, they don't have to tell them when to eat. Or where to eat, just not here, um and I think that leaves it open for like programming and things like that too, but.
Mm-hmm.
Like if someone comes in here with a coffee, I really like I don't care if they have a coffee in here when if they're working. Um so I think that's good, that kind of leaves it open too for Janice in the children's area to say where she is comfortable with people having.
Yeah.
And that will be in her pol- in the policy that we're gonna talk about next, next month, okay.
Yes, absolutely, so we can lock that down more next month. Um interfering with another person's right to use the library. Uh library furniture. Forbidden to sit on tables, play speed on furniture line, you would think you would not have to tell people this, but I've had to this past summer, tell people to sit properly in chairs. So I think that's important, um loitering. Oh, that's this one, um.
Yeah, this one is is tricky, I feel.
Loitering on library property is not allowed in general, the determining factor will be whether the offending party prevents others. Delete staff should be careful not to use this provision as a means of age discrimination, oh yeah, so we had this saying staff should be careful not to use this. As age discrimination, so I was.
Oh, you had that before, you need to delete it, I gotcha.
Yes. Um my suggestion is we delete that sentence because this isn't really um.
Mm-hmm.
A staff policy, like what staff, you know, this is more of like what you're giving the public.
Right, right.
I think I I'm not understanding it.
You don't wanna give pub- the public ideas thinking we might be discriminating against their age, um.
Right. Why, cause they're hanging around?
Why would this be?
Age.
All the old people are hanging out in libraries.
Oh, I don't come and hang out, they accept twice a week, okay, you just get right to it, there's no buffer with you, I just love it.
I think. Right, why they become trusted or they've become volunteers and make it a group.
That's it.
And they're making, you know, legally.
I think this um discrimination was more toward the teens.
Watch that.
Yes.
Oh, oh.
That like, you know, you don't wanna make it sound like you're discriminating against them because they're teenagers, so, you know.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see, oh, it's like old people.
Did you just turn this around like me too, do you, could you just leave it at like loitering on library properties not allowed?
So.
That other part, it's like, okay, it's not allowed, but there are some factors where it is allowed.
Mmm.
Yes, in general, the determining factor.
So it's the loitering, loitering is allowed, yeah, loitering allowed, lying one is not allowed.
Yeah, it shouldn't be loitering here, right, yeah.
Yeah, like there's a fine line between what's loitering and what's.
I guess, yeah, and he defines that line, how is that defined?
Loitering.
How is loitering defined?
Right. So I think.
Miss, I got my computer up, I'm looking up everything that the lawyers say.
I think that's why we threw in that second sentence, like in general, the determining factor, whether or not you're loitering.
Look at that.
Is whether or not the offending party prevents other people from enjoying the library, so if someone comes in.
Hmm.
Who's like say from a specific party and like I'm politi- politician.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, right.
Political, thank you, a political party and they're, you know, they're here and they're they're gonna do.
A little bit party, yeah.
Um like a program or the meet and greet type of a thing, like they can come in and do that, but they can't come out and start handing out their flyers to people.
That's.
Mm, mingling in the library, yeah, yeah.
Like they can have their flyers in there for people to take if they would like it, but they can't then come out into the general public and start giving their flyers out and talking people.
Yeah. Right. Mm-hmm.
They can't approach people, yeah.
So there's, but they can be here, say if they're, they come in with their family and they're here and they're having conversations with people, but they're not. Approaching people, like people are approaching them, it it is a fine line, especially with Scott Town.
So the determining factor is, you're right, it you need that second sentence.
Yeah, I think that's important, yeah, because then that kind of helps us determine whether or not it's loitering.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
If you're being a pain in the neck and you're making people uncomfortable, then it becomes a problem, but that third sentence about staff being careful, like that doesn't belong in this policy whatsoever.
It's better, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. Um personal possessions, nobody had this in their policy. I don't know if it really needs to be in there anymore.
Personal possessions?
Yeah, like they should not be left unattended, I mean, if they are.
Oh.
Well, they shouldn't anyway, because never know.
Well, see, I mean, I I don't, I I don't see why you have to tell people that.
That's kind of what I'm thinking, like it's your stuff, you're in charge of it, you're in public.
You know, some people, I know, really, there's some responsibility for it.
Like Dunkin' Donuts doesn't tell you.
If you're possible, they're leaving the bathroom and someone takes it, oh well, you know, I mean.
Right, yeah, but there isn't the.
It's a mess of my friend, right, you know, right.
Yeah, true, so I mean, I think we could probably take that out if you guys are comfortable with that.
Sure.
Personal possessions, you're on your own, plus we have a little lost and found, which usually just has like little tiny baby jackets in it, so.
Yeah.
Um and then the public display of affection, we kind of talked about that, is everyone comfortable with getting rid of that?
It is the times though, cause I can remember being like in high school, we would go, that's a place we could go after school.
Yeah.
And our parents were, you know, allowed us to go there, of course, we're gonna hang out with our.
Right.
Significance.
Now the teens just go home and talk to their boyfriends online.
Online, so, yeah, I know, I know, they.
Right, 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 in the library.
Okay, so a little, this is too funny, um staff only areas, I don't really know, I didn't see this in anyone else's, but we could keep it. Um the only ones who ever really break this are little tiny ones that run behind the desk and I tell them I'm gonna put them to work and then they run away, we really test.
I always ask before I do that, before I, when I wanna see you, I wanna make sure it's okay.
Just to come in the back, right, yeah, it's really like.
Could you remember we on staff only areas?
Staff only areas, and you don't really scare someone, um okay, so we can leave that.
Yes.
Yeah, leave that.
Threatening behavior. I think is still valid.
Good, yes, it's, yeah, yeah, that's good, sadly.
Something that needs to be um put in a call, so yeah.
Yes, and then tobacco, um that's an MGL, and then the building and grounds are tobacco free and smoke free, I wanted to include vaping and ease cigarettes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, yeah.
You know, get with the times a little bit.
Does the town, does the town have any signs up anywhere on any of their buildings, yeah, schools?
We do, you do have a, you have a sign out here?
Of course they do, I think.
We do, we, it's not outs- well, then we have one outside and then we have one on our bulletin board that says it's smoking.
You should call it, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Pro- tobacco products are prohibited in the building, um that was like a big thing, um that they made sure that we had. Um I don't know if truancy really is.
I think that needs to go, what, we're not, we're not tracking kids behaviors, I mean, kids attendance.
Right.
I, you know, I found there is something good. Somebody.
Maybe it might be the cleaners, they come early sometimes, but it's only six forty. How long they'll scare them away for?
Yeah, I see the word truancy, I think nineteen eighty.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it really has nothing to do with the library, that's.
We had a truancy. Yeah, I think that should just go, that was a question.
Okay. That was my initial instinct as well, um vandalism I think is still prevalent, unfortunately destroying or damaging library materials violates the law.
Mm-hmm.
Um I don't know if we really need to get that in depth, but regardless, that's there, and then weapons. Same thing.
So hang on on weapons.
Okay.
If somebody has a gun permit. Can they walk into the library with a gun on them?
If it's concealed, no one knows they have it.
Right, I guess so, I guess they can.
So I believe. Right, technically they can, I mean, nobody would know.
Yeah.
But like we had, yeah, but policemen come into the. Uh your place of work today and he, he was armed.
Mm-hmm.
Uh so.
Right, I mean, I, I don't know, are they, are they?
But the th- the thing is, you, the the building that you're entering can choose to prohibit it or not.
Right.
Like if you had a restaurant, you can say, no, you know, I mean, maybe legal to do that in the state, but you can't do it in my restaurant, and I think.
Yeah. Right, okay. Right.
I think the, you know, your public buildings are probably the same.
Yeah, but.
As I say, the schools, there's no guns in the schools, I don't care what they are in the state, there's no guns in the schools, no guns in the library, you know?
Right, concealed or not.
Yeah, I would ch- I would check into that first before I would, you know, to find out if the town is.
Okay, and and this is.
Then you could say enter the subject of Massachusetts law.
Yes.
Would be out.
Um because the town, I'm sure the town has something about that as well, with their town buildings.
Oh, that's a good way to finish.
Yeah, they must, yeah.
Well, because, yeah, there was a police officer came in, but he wasn't wearing per se the uniform, is he undercover?
So.
No, he wasn't undercover, he was like, no, I think he was on his way into work, but he wasn't in uniform, yeah, but he was on his way, I think, yeah.
Or detective?
Oh.
But he didn't have a gun.
Huh, interesting, the one I saw was in uniform.
I think, yeah, yeah, what, oh, was he in uniform? Oh, I didn't, I I didn't have to go, it was busy.
Well, I guess the policeman can go wherever they want.
Yeah.
Yeah, they might be.
Well, yeah, that I I I figured that that was why, like.
If they're on job, if they're on duty, I think they can kind of go wherever they want, with whatever they're hanging on. You know, whatever, whatever's at them.
I'd rather have them here than not have them here, right, it's absolutely. Yeah. Cause I figured that just went on, went without saying, or you know, it's not like the police officer coming in or something, you know.
Right, that I think they would be.
But.
Okay with that.
So so what what are we saying about it?
Just maybe leave that one and I'll double check on it.
Just um. According to Massachusetts law or something?
Yes, um.
Yeah.
Okay, I will do that. Um side note, I recently traveled to Texas, I.
They all carry, in the grocery store, they do.
I was in. You know, I was in Austin, which is a very liberal city for Texas, and I thought it was so interesting that there were signs everywhere. Like we walked into a little outdoor dog park and it was like, please leave your gun, I'm like, I was like, oh, excuse me, no, I'm just kidding. But um I just thought that was very interesting, everywhere there were, almost every place we went into said, please don't bring your gun in. So even though there, you know, they have all these rights to carry.
That can't help.
I mean, they don't need to have your permit.
It's wild, you don't have to take classes, you don't have to, you just have to be eighteen.
They, they can just go out, buy one, you.
That right?
No, they don't need a permit, no.
You can just eighteen or twenty-one, I think it's eighteen, you could just, they gotta go.
Texas. Yeah, it's eighteen, it's eighteen because that shooter bought it, he was only eighteen.
Yeah, true, and all the gun cases, like there were so many like little gun shows and gun shops and.
Really?
Yeah, 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 it's just, it's like going in and buying, it's interesting.
Groceries.
Groceries, right.
It's so strange, like you walk in like the dog park, you know, there's like a little tiny saw, like a little tiny sign about what your your dog can and cannot do. And then there's this huge sign about having your guns and a huge sign about having weapons, and a little tiny tiny dog sign.
Please punish the dogs.
This is a dog park, but I mean, this is why I'm from Massachusetts.
Ah. Stay here, right.
That's interesting, um okay, so then, then we have this definition of problem behavior. I don't really know if, I don't, I don't know, like most of the. Policies that I've read had their introduction, had the list of things you don't do, and that was basically it. So I don't know if we need this section or if we wanna keep it just to cover ourselves.
I think you keep it.
I think we should keep it, I guess my question is, um. Uh and I didn't read this very super closely, this last section, but. If you have a problem, any one of these issues.
Yes.
What's the procedure?
So um they're first advised of our policy, so you'll see like that first bullet.
Okay, there we go, I get it now, I see it now, okay.
So. So when I I had an issue at one point where um two people were arguing in the children's room.
Okay.
And um being very sassy, and uh so I I went in and I just said, you know, um. I just wanna be you to be aware of our policy and I had it with me that you like, you know. Disrupted behavior, if you are disrupting other people's, you know, comfort and, you know, making people uncomfortable, I, you know. It's it's not allowed, and then I had to kind of tell them that if if it continues, I'll have to ask you to leave. And um they, I think I probably mortified this person, like, oh my god, I just got yelled at by the librarian, like I'm a grown person.
Yeah.
And yeah, so they they never, never acted out again, they did come back, they were very pleasant, um you know.
Did they come back?
So I think it that this should stay and remain.
I think it should remain.
So it's kind of nice, it's also a nice guidance for staff too.
It's really nice to explain.
And it tells, and it tells them exactly what will happen to them, if they continue this behavior.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, they get a subsequent warning, um.
So there's no, um, you know, they don't have a leg to stand on if indeed that behavior, cause it's right here in your policy.
Right.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree, and it has been, you know, it's it's especially if we haven't had to use this very often, to go back to the policy and say, this is exactly what I need to do.
Mm-hmm.
Or if I'm not here, one of my staff, people will say, this is exactly what it says to do, um.
Right.
The gun thing says that you can carry in Massachusetts as long as you have a license.
Okay, so then.
That's twenty twenty two.
So I think maybe just keeping our policy.
But the licensure procedure is very strict, and the police chief still have the right to revoke anybody.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Based on experience.
Okay.
But can't, but it doesn't say anything about carrying in. In.
In public, in public.
In public.
Right, in certain places, I think, isn't it just everyone's?
I think certainly.
Like own choice of what they want in their building.
Right, well. Sure. Yeah, I think so, I mean, you know, if you have a a private business, you can say whether or not.
Um let me see. Um let me see if any of these say anything about it.
You want guns in there. I'm sure.
No bringing weapons into the library. Um that's Springfield. Food, I would say tobacco free.
Oh, what does ours say? Because I I I think just as a matter of fact like that, no bringing weapons into the library.
Like this one says dangerous weapons are not allowed on library property, actually like that, I think that's. Pretty. Short and sweet on library property, like we don't even want, like not outside, you shouldn't be out in the reading garden with your gun or whatever, I think.
No, no.
Right, right, but like you say, the these little guns, if people just put them in their pocketbooks and you wouldn't ever know, you know.
Yeah.
In the.
Right, yeah.
But you can only control what you know, you know.
Exactly.
That's right.
If you see it on, if they're coming in with a full size holster, it's like a, take it outside, but.
But if we put it in here.
Yeah, or or AK fifteen or something, just long over their shoulder.
Yeah. Um. Okay, then, stop listening to our conversations, um actually like this, I think dangerous weapons are not allowed on library property, it's short, sweet, to the.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I I I like that.
I don't think so either. No, I don't either, I just was curious.
Okay, let's let's change to that, dangerous weapons are not allowed. Are not allowed on library property, and a lot of um our policies. The town wants us to include on town property, so like the no smoking, it's on all town property. Um it's not just an us rule and it's an in the parking lot as well kind of a thing, that they don't want smoking on the grounds at all.
Mm-hmm. I do have a question about the destruct- disruptive behavior.
Okay.
Um is there, do you write them up?
Um. No, we we tell them, yeah, so it's a verbal, we tell them the policy or we show them the policy and say, if it continues, we will have to ask you to leave.
It's all verbal, yeah. Okay.
Like those people that that one time, that one time you was talking about, you talked to them directly, you should.
Right.
Yes. Directly went to them and just said.
I suppose if the police were called, then it's a whole different story, they have to do their documentation, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yes, so if it escalates to a point where like, you know, God forbid anyone's fighting in the library or something like that, then.
They don't, yeah, it will be.
Yeah.
Um it would escalate further, but, um like it says here, if an individual does not stop the improper behavior and does not leave, when asked to do so, staff will call the police.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Um if a staff member judges disturbance too serious to handle alone, they will call for backup from coworkers and a supervisor, so. Um I feel like it's more guidelines for our staff than for the public, but it's good to to have it in there.
Mm-hmm. And the police are always willing to come, even if they're not gonna arrest anybody, it's just to make a presence and.
Yeah, they've been very, very nice, just like, you know, they've, I've called them for things that I thought might be a little silly, you know, like.
You know. Mm-hmm.
We had somebody like sleeping in their car, but they were parked in the delivery area and I had a delivery coming, so I was just gonna go out there.
Yeah.
And Jean was like, you better not go out there and, you know, knock on the window, like when it's their hostile, and I was like, oh, I didn't even think about that, you know.
You don't know.
And then so I called the police and like I felt kind of silly, and they were like, oh my gosh, no, call us, yeah, so, you know.
But that was a safety, that was a safety measure.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't, I don't have to call the police very often, so I was like, I don't know if this is a thing or not, but um it's nice, they're like, call us anytime.
It's some gifts and stuff to do.
Right, you come on through the parking lot, check things out.
It's usually pretty lazy, lazy around here.
And actually, the the way they, when the, when they do respond, they're actually very good about it, you know, they go and they talk to them and they say, hey, what's, yeah, what's going on?
Yeah, they're very good and they, and they have the time to deal with things like that, whereas if you were like in New York City or.
Right, they'd be like, yeah, I got other things to do.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, yeah, I've got, I've got murders to worry about, you know.
Right, but if anyone dies.
A puppy would be nice sleeping in his car, you know.
Seriously, it's 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 nice to have the the extra support.
Did you notice that that was, that today is the thirteenth of September, and that was amended the thirteenth of September two thousand sixteen?
Mm-hmm.
Oh my gosh, oh yeah, that is weird, ugh, stop, Tuesday the thirteenth.
Dang, look at that.
Yeah. Wow.
Um okay, so is everyone comfortable with those changes, should we vote, move it along?
Yes, changes.
Yeah, yeah.
I make a motion that we amend the patron behavior policy as amended.
I'll second that. Um all in favor?
Hi, beautiful, I will make up new copies and have them at our next meeting for you guys to put in your binders.
Hi.
Um and we'll work on the children's room use policy next month, I think that will be, um.
I just wanna say, I love how you did this with the red, it's.
Okay.
It's just, you know, I've read a lot of these kinds of things and it's like, oh boy, I gotta read all this, it's like, oh no, Jen thinks this is good, all right, I'll really look at that, I'll really look, you know, so.
Right, rather than, you know, just reinvent the wheel from the very beginning and be here all night long, um.
Yes, right, right. So that's very, very helpful, Jen, so nicely done.
Awesome, great, okay, I will keep that going in the future for our policy work. On our current library statistics, I don't have it on the screen tonight, only because we're in a different room, um. We have a total of sec- six thousand seven hundred. Um, we have a total of sec- six thousand seven hundred and twenty-four circulations in August, which was up two hundred and seventy-two from July. Which I was actually surprised that it was more than July, because July is usually the biggest. Um, our peak busy times of the week continued to be about eleven AM daily, and then Friday afternoons, always crank in. And the circulated value of items was eighty-three thousand nine eighteen seventy-six, which was comparable, comparable to July. Um, for our fall activities, the library continues to offer our monthly book group. We have our quilting group that meets monthly, our knitting group meets a couple times a month. And we have, we still have the self-run puzzle table and the coloring pa- table, because people really loved it. I figured I would just keep it going. I see people back there.
Yeah. And there's fall, the one that's coming up too.
Yes, so I'm going to order another coloring page, cause that was almost done. And, um, have people continue it. It's just like really great to see people over there working on it, and, you know, some people come in just for that, cause they enjoy doing it, and
Wow.
So, yeah, it's cute. Um.
This next one's gonna be fall-related?
Yeah, I'll try to find something kinda like fall-esque.
Nice. I do miss our little crafts though.
Oh my gosh, I know the crafts were really cool.
They were so good, they were so good this summer.
Oh my gosh.
I mean, really, who did the crafts? Did Janes do that?
Jean did the adult crafts, and Jan did the children's, teens.
Okay, okay, tell, I'm gonna have to talk to her, because they were just out of this world.
She did a great job. We had, um, Gloria.
She jarred the flowers, a little thing.
That was, my gosh, that was probably our most popular one.
You know, when I have them, yeah.
We should bring them back so you can see it.
Yeah, they're amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was probably the most popular.
Yeah, I was hearing that, it was pretty popular, the, the, the adult crafts.
Yeah. And Gloria helped, and Janice was, um, I shouldn't say she wasn't, well, she did the, the necklace one.
Shell, yeah, I had a shell necklace.
That was, that was her. She, yeah, so she did help. Um, cause they're, they're just both so crafty, that
But they're easy, and they assemble them all, so it's like, for the busy, you know, mom or whatever, and also will do some for herself.
Yeah. Something fun to sit down and, and work on, and
Doing, really nice.
And it sparked some people to wanna join our knitting group and stuff too, so, um, I will let her know that you would like more.
Yeah. I would, I would enjoy that.
I'll see what she can come up with for, um, maybe she can do a couple for the fall. Um.
I just enjoy.
Yeah, it was really cool. Um, she's working on for, this is like looking way ahead, but we're doing gnome for the holidays. So it was all gnome themed, we're gonna do a little gnome hunt, and she is currently knitting these adorable little teeny tiny gnomes that people can adopt.
Oh.
So you like donate, you know, like, two dollars to the library or whatever, and adopt your little gnome, and could take pictures with him, your holiday pictures, and would submit to the library.
Oh, it's kinda like the, that traveling one, where they take What's that one that the kids do?
Yes.
The shelf?
Um.
Like this
On the elf on the shelf, it's kinda like that.
The elf, yeah.
It's kind of like that.
So he's kind of like a little gnome, a little, yes, where's, oh my gosh, it's like so.
Burgers while I wear a gnome.
Yeah.
Gnome.
That's super cute.
Holidays with your gnomies. Yeah, we've got a lot of really nerdy, but
Oh my goodness.
Oh my gosh.
Gnomies.
We've got, we, we went a little crazy, um,
Oh, that's hilarious.
It's fun though.
But then we'll have people submit their pictures to us, and we can put them up on the Facebook and say like, this is where this gnome is, blah, blah, blah.
Where is your gnome today?
So, yeah, it's like a fun little thing to, you know, to get people interacting with.
Now, where in the world is gnome?
Gnome Alaska, or gnome
Yes, so that's coming up.
Cause like they do with the, like, there's all people like have a central or something, and they'll take a picture of it like some other place.
I think I can get one.
They're cute.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh my gosh, yes, you'll have to get all, everybody involved. Um, so we have our pastel workshop is coming up in November, if anyone's interested, we'll be doing this gorgeous jellyfish.
They're very popular.
Oh, wow.
Like
Oh.
I don't know how, because it looks really detailed, but Greg is amazing at like teaching people how to do this. Um,
It's step-by-step, it's
What's the date on it? November twelfth. It's a Saturday at eleven. Um.
And that's in-person?
It will be in-person here in the community room this time.
Okay.
Um, which will be nice. Um, and then next year's, well, I'm getting ahead of myself, but, uh, let me see. The youth, they're doing, uh, the playgroup starts back up this week on Wednesday, Friday mornings. Um, we have fall drop in crafts that are scheduled. We do reading to dogs twice a month. The, um, book clu- book club for like the middle schoolers starts back up this week. They meet monthly.
And what the age group is that, up to like twelve, thirteen or something?
Um. Yeah. Um, mid, middle-aged to like tween.
Like twelve to thirteen, or twelve to thirteen.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they're, and even I think a little bit younger, probably like eleven-ish. Um, for the teens, we're doing bandbook week, we're celebrating that. Um, they will also have a drop-in fall craft. We continue to do our Dungeons and Dragons club every week on Wednesday, and then we are gauging interest, if anyone's potentially interested in doing a chess group and a Magic the Gathering group, since those kind of like small tabletop.
Magic is still, magic is still a thing.
It's still a thing, like even more, I mean, I find so many people are interested, like in the Dungeons of Dragons, like anything tabletop, small group. I think people are really looking for those kinds of interactions.
And chess would be what, any age?
Uh, yeah, any age of, for
Cause I, I feel that, like, even the young kids who learn, I mean, they can go up against, um, not that the adults.
Middle school, teen.
They can. They can, yeah.
Yeah.
They can't.
No problem.
You know.
I can't say that, yeah.
I, I can't either. Don't worry about it.
You need to know, you know, I'm good.
And for the, um, our twenty twenty-three cultural council application round is coming up. We so far are applying for Ed the Wizard for the kids. Um, John
Ed the Wizard?
Ed the Wizard.
Oh, he's a wizard.
Wizard.
Oh my.
That would be, that would be one of those oddities, I think. Um, John Root, I have reached out to him about doing his mushrooms of the northeast program, cause people are really into fungi lately, like, it's just a thing. Um,
It is.
Yeah, like people are really interested in mushrooms, so I'm gonna have
Not the magic one.
The shell space.
Not the magic one.
The shell space. I don't know, maybe he can help you figure that out. I, I don't know. Um,
I don't know.
I'm sure they grow in the northeast. Um, and then we're
Roses are on here.
Going to have, um, Greg Maycheck back for his roses presentation, so it'll be this, but it'll be
Oh.
red roses. It's really gorgeous. I'm very excited about that one. Um, that's what I have lined up. The, um, I'm meeting with the friends this Thursday night at six, if anybody's interested in coming. Um, we are trying to get some more people involved. I have a couple of our volunteers who are actually going to be coming to the meeting to hear more about it than recruiting. Um, and I'm going to be proposing to them the coffee and chocolate program that we talked about. I just spoke with her today. We tentatively have it set for Saturday, December tenth at eleven thirty AM.
And what is that? What is the coffee and chocolate program?
So this woman, her name is Kim Larkin, she does all of these really neat programs, where she brings all of her, she has antique coffee pots. And she brings in a whole sampling of chocolates and a sampling of different kinds of coffee.
Sounds like heaven.
And pairs them together.
Sounds like heaven.
Yes, so you get like your dark rose with your dark chocolate kind of a thing. And she makes all of her own chocolates. She's fantastic, and she's gotten such great reviews from a, a bunch of di- different directors that I speak with.
December tenth?
December tenth, right, write it down.
And so, sorry.
Is that a, is that a Saturday?
Is there something? It's a Saturday morning at eleven thirty.
Oh, yeah. So she would teach like about pairing, but I, like you said, that she makes her own chocolates, so I don't know, would she like have recipes for the chocolates, or no, she's just maybe doing the, just the pairing?
She might. Yeah, she does, um.
Does one of you know?
I'd, I'd be interested.
Let me see.
What?
What do you know of your coffee?
You just come for the chocolate?
I just come for the chocolate.
Let me see, I have her. Let me see, Kim. She is fantastic. She's gotten amazing reviews.
Are you drinking chocolate?
Um, one of my fellow directors says he, he loves having her, um, just for his own personal.
I really love coffee now.
Does she charge? She does, so I'll be pitching it to the friends. It's, um, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the hour for up to forty people.
Wow.
Ooh, forty people.
So it's a pretty good, um, she says the presentation covers everything there is to know about Java, the interesting history benefits, how and where coffee and chocolate hail from, the famous pioneers in both industries, interactive trivia quiz, best brewing and roasting methods, fun coffee terminology, chocolate tasting wheel for each patron, fun display of vintage coffee grinders and coffee pots, chocolate samplings that include espresso, coffee cup molded chocolates, bittersweet, and a classic decaf Italian affa- affagato? In person. Specialty coffee associated with American certified in coffee foundations. Um, she also has organic as well. So.
Have you been to one of hers?
I haven't.
That sounds really
But I have envy from all of my directors that talk about her. Totally envy is.
Did you, have you started the sign-up yet?
Not yet.
I'm sure you sold out. I'm sure. They found, that's kind of donation.
Right? Oh my gosh. Doesn't want like cho- chocolate and coffee in December?
I know, I know.
I know.
We're all gonna need it, and this, we also will be doing our basket sale around the same time, so you can come in and do both.
Lovely.
Can go shopping, your coffee and your chocolate, and if anyone wants to help me pitch it to the friends, I'm meeting with them Thursday night at six.
Oh, oh, that's nice. Yeah.
So, um.
So speaking of the baskets, how do you all put the baskets together? Do you solicit donations? What do you, what's yours, what's your deal on that?
Yes. Now, we ask for completed baskets for donation, and a lot of people will do that, like, a lot of people love to do that kind of stuff. They'll donate a completed basket.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And they're good stuff too. I'm not allowed to express this very.
Yes, so we have, um, companies that are, businesses that will donate baskets or gift certificates, and then sometimes we will make up the extras.
Okay. I mean. Cause I have some miscellaneous items, not enough to put together a basket, so maybe I'll just drop them here and you guys can
Right, and we do, yeah, we do take some, yeah, well, that's the thing, is that like, Janice and Jean are both so creative, that they can just put these baskets together, that
Right, you mentioned that.
Work your magic. I look for My gosh.
That's it.
Like, all these items just look like items to me, but they'll be like, oh yeah, this, that, I have this at home, and
They have, they have the E, the I.
Yeah. It's amazing. They're very creative, so, um, they do put some together, and the friends will pay for like whatever supply is needed, and then
Okay. Okay.
They make pretty decent money at these sales. They do great.
Jenny, are you running the book group now?
Yes, I am.
The reason I'm asking is, um, I have a dear friend who lives in Tivity, and she released a, a book last year that's marvelous. It's all about the history. It's a story about Christmas.
Oh.
As she remembers it as a nine-year-old girl, but it has the whole history of Holliuk. Like all these pictures, like the history is just, it's an amazing book, and it's not like really long.
Ooh.
Wow.
She grew up in Holliuk.
She did, the flats, the flats of Holliuk.
You think she'd be willing? What's her name?
I would love her to come in.
What's the name? What's the name of the girl?
I have it at home. Actually, I have it in my car. I should go bring it together.
What's her name?
Her name is Ba- Barbara, uh, Rochella, but her maiden name is Reed. She grew up on Mosher Street.
Robert Reed.
I would love that, and she can come talk with us.
Did you talk to her before?
I think she was working there, cause she's, she's been at Mysteria Her selling the books.
Oh, great.
Oh.
She really researched, I mean, it's just, it's like a, that time period where Holliuk is just
I know.
I'm a, I'm a native of Holliuk, so
I'm gonna go get it, so you can look at it. Right, it's in my car.
Yeah. Wonder if she would let us borrow enough copies to share with everyone? Like, if we were to purchase some, do you think she would let us borrow extra copies that we could return?
She'd have to come and talk. I don't know.
Okay.
Because she doesn't, she only has like, she has to pay for them, and she's also like eighty years old.
Someone should have, we have to get. Okay.
So, it's not like she has.
Maybe that's something we could
It's a real, I've read it, it's really good.
If I could get the friends to purchase enough copies, I could then donate them to other local libraries.
Or have her come talk. She, I, there's so, she's done a lot of talks about it, and she really researched it. I mean, it's, it's just like the pictures of how it was.
Yeah. My group's gonna wanna read it, for sure.
Amazing.
That would be a great idea.
Maybe we could have her come here. Um, and do a book signing and sell books.
Maybe do like a December book group type thing.
Hmm.
And then she can do her signing and have a talk with people. That would be great.
That would be great.
How many people are in the book group right now?
Um, we get anywhere between like ten to fifteen, depending, um, like some nights, you know, some don't come and others do, so probably fifteen to twenty total.
Ah, okay. Mm-hmm. Right.
Not everybody comes at each time, but, um, while she's doing that, my last thing that I have for you guys is that it is time to do our conflict of interest training. Um,
Where do we go for that?
They are due every two years, so I will be making a note of it in my listing of how often we have to do stuff, that everyone did it this fall. Same with my staff as well, cause the staff has to complete. On the very back of the packet that I gave you, there is a web address.
Okay.
On the, there you go.
Oh.
Sorry. Uh, yours is pink, cause yours is the original, but it's
Oh, okay.
Um, highlighted there. So you just go to that website, you find the conflict of interest training, you click on it, you put in there that you are a, um, town or municipal employee, and even though you're not an employee, paid employee, you still count as a municipal employee, and, um, it gives you a spot to put in there that you're a trustee of the library. And then when you're done, I just ask that you print out two copies of the form
Mm-hmm.
to bring to me. I keep one on file here and one will get sent to town hall.
Oh, cause I think we did it like two years ago, and I remember coming here and doing it, and then just doing the copies and stuff.
I really do.
Yes. And you can do it here, if it's easier for you guys. I have headphones, I have computers, you could just log right in.
Yeah.
How long is it?
Um, it probably took me like forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
Total.
Yeah.
Um, and if you can decipher all of the Eastern Mass accents, it's pretty funny.
I hope the, um,
Oh.
This, the certificate, the PDFs that I can
Um, I was just telling the group that we have our conflict of interest paperwork in that packet.
I have to do too, for my new job.
Well, you can like come and do it here.
Okay.
Anytime to do that.
I know.
Who's coming up to do it?
Oh. Oh, we all are, yeah, we're all gonna do it at the same time.
No.
Or maybe you do it at home, and then you can come here and
Yeah, yeah.
And just print it out, yeah.
Yeah. I have to do this one for my job, this one.
It's on the very back, the web address.
That's what I ended up doing.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Yes.
And they just ask that everybody print two copies of your certificate at the end. I'll keep one on file here for our records.
My dad did.
So the next time, we're like, when do we have to do that? I can look through my file, cause he's, and be like, at the same time?
He's, he kind of likes that, the girl does things, that's so
Yeah, yeah. He has pretty significant dementia, but, um,
Yes, she has a piazzetta.
And my brother also just bought a house in Holliuk with his senior life, so
And she sells them, she sells them, um, she's a little serious.
Wonder if she'd wanna come like around, Chris, like into center.
So, I think this is a
Um, and so, she comes back from New Hampshire in, in November, so she's like at the seminar, she's up at New Hampshire.
Okay.
Yeah.
So even if my book group doesn't read it for a book group, we could have her come for a signing, and, uh, she could do a reading.
Really nice.
It's really cool. The pictures, the research is amazing, and the pictures, and just how it was back then. She talks about these, in the back, I feel like the, the back, there's a picture of her on the back. Is that her? Yeah, that's her, that's where the girl's been.
Hmm. Awesome.
There's not a lot of buildings still left, but that's where she lived.
If she's interested, we would love to have her.
Yeah, she's very, uh, she may be old, starts chronological, but inside she's super young.
Yeah.
Until it's donor, I might be just like running for a while.
Or even to purchase one book to have here at the library, or
Yeah, we'll definitely purchase.
To be, yeah, that's right.
You donated a copy to us.
I decided to go with that.
Oh, you did, um.
I, I remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is, I don't know, Jean might have had to do original cataloging on it, but, um, we definitely do have a copy.
It was somewhere. Uh, there really was a time, you know.
So anyone wanna look at it?
Uh, my dad's a frequent one, so
Um,
That's it. It was a different time.
Yeah.
And in the
Oh, yeah.
essence of time, um, I have two warrants. One is for three hundred and forty-four dollars. It's Baker and Taylor and Durenzi, and then one for one thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. That's for Baker and Taylor, Blackstone Publishing, Ingram Entertainment, Midwest Tapes, Durenzi, and Library Journal. That was kind of a big one. If you guys wanna sign that, then we can move on to someone else's.
There we go.
You know, we haven't had a really good thunderstorm in a long time.
Well, last time we had the thunderstorm, we were here in the other room.
We, we, we
But it was so short. It was, they've all been like just duke dunked.
Yeah, the power went off.
It was a fire at the dump, remember?
Guys, that was a weird day.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, yes, yes, yeah. Oh, I'm gonna look at it after you. There you go.
Um, did we, did we make a motion to sign them?
Uh, I'll make, I'll make a motion to, uh, um,
To sign them.
Sign them.
Sign the warrants.
No, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. And I don't know if I mentioned it while we were all together, but this little packet that's called Book Page is for each of you to take home.
It's so cool.
It is a little free trial that I've signed up for. They give you fifty copies of it per month,
I like it.
and you can hand it out to your patrons, and it's just like a really cool little review, like little mini journal, um, which I'm thinking about getting, so I thought I could use you all as my guinea pigs, to kinda take it home and check it out, and see if you think it's something worth paying money for, for our patrons.
Umbrella, cause I forgot.
Mine's in the car.
Yeah, it's in the car. Oh, yeah, I got one in the car too. So feel free to take it home. Let me know if you want me to order you any of the books that are in it.
This is like scholastic.
It's like scholastic, like grownups.
Yeah, like, like the smell of it, you're just like, oh, yes.
Right?
It was glossy, yeah.
It's fabulous.
Yeah, I think I would have.
There you go, the fruit for fungi.
Oh, is this, is this so lethal? Yes, see, there's, there's the fungi.
I, I saw him on TV or something.
What, tell him.
Orange.
His, uh, Javier Samara, he was nine years old, and he walked from Guatemala, oh no, El Salvador to the United States by himself.
Wow.
Oh, wow.
He will. So, awesome, we got to get that. I'll have to get that one. You know, some of these I don't have yet here in the building, so I said I better get on it and order them before people get this.
A little, that's amazing. What about the witches in one on the
The witches?
Where is that?
Perfect.
That's on page, uh, La Puski, page ten.
Awesome.
The very secret society in regularity.
Yes, I have Yes, I have that one ordered.
Ah, oh, yeah.
Do you?
Mm-hmm.
See?
I got you.
So when um when I was first a trustee, like it might have been in the late nineteen nineties, um. At the old building, uh, that was one of the things we did as trustees, we didn't have much else to do back then, but we would, we would order the books.
Really?
Like there was like two to three of us.
To do the reviews and you'd read them, I remember them up on the shelf when I used to volunteer there.
Yeah.
You'd come in and get your book and, you know, remember that.
Isn't that wild?
Do you have, like, I've seen out there like staff picks and like reviews, do you all do that on a regular basis, or it's kind of?
The book group they do it.
The book group?
I, yeah, we always have the book group out, I always have a staff shelf, and then I usually do like a special um. Little collection, like right now we're doing um a special collection on graphic novels for adults. We have a new volunteer, uh, on Thursday nights, his name is Xander, and he came in and he said, he's like, Jen, you do not have enough graphic novels for adults. And I was like, you know, I never really thought about that, and he said, I bet if you got them, people would, you know, so I I actually asked his opinion, and he gave me a list of the ones he thought we should try. I ordered them and put them out, and I noticed like people aren't taking them, so that's kind of like, you know, so some things that we normally wouldn't.
Wow.
Think of to delve into that, like sometimes our patrons will give us suggestions that will turn into a thing, sometimes like a lot of people are asking for fungi, and so I get a bunch of books about. You know, mushrooms and put them out, so it's all based on what I notice people are asking for.
But I love your little section, these new, like anything that's in the front, it's the first place I go to, my family.
And then, the staff picks. Yes, the front, we've actually started putting.
Uh, the books and the books, yeah.
We started putting um our magazines, cause we started getting the Magnolia magazine, which is Joanna Gaines.
Yeah, you do, you do, too. Oh.
Oh, that's very cool. Yeah.
Um, and you know, I thought we'll get there all the way in the back, like I don't know if people will notice that we have them, so I started putting them on the end cab to get people's attention and.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do love magazines.
Hmm.
I was gonna go to Kate's.
Um, so it all kind of depends on, you know, the ebb and flow of what people are asking for, and um and then the staff picks is just like a fun, like. I started doing it and people were just like, I love your staff pick section, don't stop doing that, so like every morning I come in, I make sure everything is stocked. And uh, I try to put in a good mix so that it's not all like Jen's horror picks, because that can get a little irritating, right? Right, well, I have a good one for you, by the way, um, I'm gonna tell her about the Daisy Dancer. But yeah, people just seem to really love it, so I've been keeping it going and. We'll switch it up depending on like it's fall, who puts the fall books out. My volunteer today said she wants books with leaves on the cover for next week.
Nice.
So I'm like, okay, if you have time to see, like what books have leaves on the cover, by all means, I don't know if I have time for that, but.
And the staff picks are all the ones that you guys have read?
Yes.
And recommend, recommend?
We're like, oh my gosh, I loved this book, and I find that if someone comes in and says, all right, I need a really good book that you've read, what's good in like this genre and all. So then I kind of think of those type of books, then like if someone were to come in and say, what's your favorite historical fiction, so I'll grab it and just put it out there. Um, so that people have kind of a little, something to choose from if they don't have any interest in like what's new or. They don't want graphic novels.
That is, that's actually a cool idea.
People love it, cause sometimes people don't know what they want, they'll just come in, they're like, they don't wanna walk through all the fiction books looking for, maybe they don't know what to read.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I I've asked Janice a a few times, I'm like, what have you read that you would recommend?
Yes, she is amazing at recommendation, oh my gosh.
Yeah.
Yes, she is.
I have some people that call and they they're like, ask it like, no, I don't wanna talk to you, I wanna talk to Janice.
She read like, how many books was it last year she read?
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, it was like an unbelievable amount of books.
There's a lot, there's a lot.
That's why she she knows.
Sixty-something or whatever, it was a, it was a high number.
I'm 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 asked, like aspiring to guess to that level, but with a seven-year-old, not so much, but um. Yeah, so feel free to look through that, let me know if you have any suggestions from it that you wanna see here in our library, I'm happy to do it. I think it'll be something fun to give out to our patrons and see if people really like it, I'll consider um spending some money on getting. And it's, I think three hundred dollars a year for fifty copies a month, so.
So.
It's not too bad, when you, you know, all things considered, if it's something the general public can take home with them.
Amount of things that you guys have going with the library, with the programs and everything, um, especially after COVID, you know, and just. Bringing the people back in and um I, I think you guys are doing an amazing job, you know, with that.
Thank you, we're trying.
How much money do you get from the cultural council typically?
They usually, um, I wanna say three or four of our programs typically get approved, um.
So like a thousand dollars maybe?
Probably like seven fifty to a thousand, depending, I mean, don't quote me on it on TV.
Yeah.
But yeah, they do, um, they typically pay for the entire Greg Maycheck, because we ask for him every year and um. Sometimes they'll like half fund other things, if we get like two or three other adult programs that come in, they will fund part of it. So that the friends will pick up the other half, so we probably like five hundred each for adult and children.
Where are we at with the uh mulch and the?
All done, all done, all done.
Yes.
Well, it's okay, I just.
Yep, yep.
We wanna segue into that.
Gotta take a closer look.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I think they came out really quickly, like within the week and, you know, mulched everything and uh. Trimmed everything, so it looks really good, um, but there is a little troublesome area with weeds. Uh, maybe come back and try to pull, um, but we are finished for the most part with Alice's garden. Uh, we just need to put the sign up, tried to do it the other day and it was fighting us, it's just the ground was, we needed a bigger shovel to get it in. Um, but we are, uh, we decided we're gonna do a little uh dedication on October fif- uh, October fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
October, what day is it?
October fifteenth.
Fifteen.
Um, yeah. And October fifteenth, ten A M, um, we're gonna have a small, after the dedication, it's a Saturday.
What day is that? Okay.
Saturday morning, we'll serve refreshments.
Oh, jeez, I can't, my my brother's getting married the the next day, sorry. Or I'm having a baby, I don't know which, so.
Well, probably something simple like cider, so.
It's a lot. Yeah, I I just can't commit to anything during that time.
Okay. So, yeah, um, yeah, we moved over her daffodils, her Hawaiian momami bush, um. Her t- table, that big table rock that's there, we got the the chairs from, um. Sheriff Ko- Kochi, um, so, and we'll just uh do a small dedication, invite the f- former trustees, um, people who were. Uh, here when we first opened the building and then um her family.
Mm-hmm.
And you're gonna do a little talk, right?
Yeah, I'll do one on Sunday.
And Jen will do a little talk and just thank the people who helped us, um.
Yes, it's really nice.
So, yeah, it'll be, it'll be finished.
Will you contact the um, the news?
Yeah.
We can, absolutely.
I wrote a little article, I just sent it to you.
Yes, I saw it, I will look it over, I'll come back to you.
Yeah. Yeah. I had a hard time with Word, so it's, it's, I, it's the way it is, in a way, you could probably cut and paste it into a Word document.
No problem at all.
Uh, yeah. So, and the other thing too is I met uh an author the other day, I I was signed up at um.
It's really nice.
At the uh, uh, Dyno Fest, and his name is Kevin Flanders, does anybody remember him?
I do, I bought two of his books.
Oh, you bought some books from him.
And I'm halfway through the first one, it's a, it's a scary one, of course.
Ah.
It's, it's actually pretty good.
Is that right? You have quite a few of them.
Yeah. He, he had a ton of them, and he's just, he must have been writing since he was born.
Yeah. He said, um.
Cause he's very young.
Starting.
Yeah, there is quite a few over there, he said he used to write for the Sentinel.
Yes, yeah, yeah, he lives in Munson, he's from Munson.
So I said, to him.
Ah.
That's cool, that's nice.
Oh, okay, so maybe we could invite him here some night, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We could do a little talk and maybe try to sell some books, well, I'm glad you're leaving his book.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I would love to have, I would love to have some authors come back and.
Yeah, yeah.
So you'll just from the the border job?
Do a little more talks.
No, 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 he writes a lot of different things.
Okay.
But that's my preferred.
I'll admit, but I don't know if I have too much for. And that book we read last time, it. In the book group?
Uh, The Wolves?
That was a, no.
No.
The Paper Something.
Well, The Paper Palace.
Too much sex.
Yeah. Maybe I need to switch it up a little.
I don't need to have that descriptive stuff in words.
We have to have a nice general uh genre.
Balance, um.
That's a good word, balance.
You have to balance it out, I mean, I can't kill them with too much World War Two historical fiction, you gotta switch it up.
I was turning around, just reading.
It was a little racy, yeah. What was the name of it? It's called, I'm gonna write this down, it's called The Paper Palace.
The Paper.
Yeah, we read that one, um.
That was like when I was sitting next to Penny, you know who Penny is?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm sitting next to her book group, she was talking about the um. Fifty Shades, she goes, oh, I read all those, I'm like. Those look crazy, too, like she was older, like, they were not bad.
They're, they can be, for sure.
I didn't read those.
It's funny.
Right, yeah, lots of different genres, we like to switch it up. We're, what are we reading, oh, we're reading The Girls in the Stilt House for this coming month, um.
Did you do the Wolves one yet?
We did Once the Wolves for last week's group, it was really good, it was interesting and.
That was pretty good. That was interesting. But the Wolves, that's sad.
It was really like, it kept me wondering whether or not the sister was even alive.
Oh, my gosh, how many times did you think that?
Oh, is that how, like, that's how it ended and it left you wondering?
No, they they.
They they cleared it up.
Oh, 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 okay, oh.
They did clear it up in the end, but like, I'm listening to it.
They did clear it up a time, like I say, the half of the week, exactly.
And I was like, is she losing her mind?
Or is she real?
Is she even real, like I, that was, that was a really good, like I wasn't sure if I liked the book until it started making me question, then I really liked it, so.
Yeah. But it's time for some people to read, cause it has a lot of abusive stuff in it.
Yeah, which the book before did too, the The Paper Palace was.
I know, it's like, what's up with this pain?
Yeah, so we're switching it up, The Girls in the Stilt House. Look, we're doing where the. We're gonna read some Colleen Hoover in there, you'll be fine.
So, um, when we do the trustee orientation, um, are we gonna serve foods?
I could do, yeah, I think light refreshments, they typically do have.
Live happily. They just, they look perfect.
Cause they bring their own, but I will talk, I will touch base with Maura, because, um.
For you, isn't it, you know, school for the whole year.
We had kind of talked about that a little bit, as far as like things that are left, so I will get on board with her. And I'll touch base and make sure that it's gonna still happen too.
Yeah.
And it looks like we only have ten people signed up as of tonight, but it's still early, and it's, and it's, and it's nice to have a Western Mass, you know.
Yeah.
This is good.
Well, the the, the other one, the other orientation that they had got canceled because they didn't have enough people.
And people.
Oh.
Yeah, that's why I was a little concerned, but I think because we're Western Mass, that maybe it'll appeal to more of the trustees out here, right?
Yeah.
Cause a lot of them are out in central and west or eastern rather, so maybe this will appeal to more of the local trustees here.
Yeah.
Maybe I can do a little blurb, something I can send out to Joe over in South Hadley to kind of. Let his trustees know about it, and then maybe Holyoke and Belcher Town and just kind of.
Do you, do you need refreshments or?
That's what we were just talking about, I'm gonna find out, um, I talked about it vaguely with Maura.
The one I've watched years and years and years ago, they serve.
They usually have something, so.
I do remember the previous.
Yeah, me too, I remember those cookies.
It's like coffee and chocolate, right?
I mean, it's an amazing idea, just gonna start giving you guys chocolate to make you happy.
Pretty seemingly, right?
Okay, so I will touch base with Maura, we had kind of left it at, we would touch base when we get closer to the event.
And that, that's on the fourth that you said, right?
Exactly. Yes. Exactly, that's one of the chairs.
Cause I was looking to see, we're not gonna have a meeting before then.
Yeah, our meeting's, I think the weekend, so we'll be seeing a lot of each other.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if you find out what you need, just send out a blast or something.
Yeah, you.
Yeah, I can do that.
You know, cause I think vague, cause I'm, I'm, I'll be, I'm coming.
Okay.
Or even to go and pick up something at the store to have, yeah.
Get the refreshments, okay, I will put here to email blast.
Yeah.
To trustees.
B J's and I are good friends.
Yeah, B J's is a good place to go, get something.
Definitely get good prices. Um, did anyone not get a binder from me last time?
I was in here.
Oh, shoot, I lied, these ones are empty, just kidding. You don't get a binder, no, I have, they're in my office, these are the empty ones. This is the kind of day I've had today where everything has just been like, oh, okay, well, I thought I had all my stuff together and then, oh, two binders. Okay, I'll grab that for you.
No, that's okay, wh- whatever.
Maybe Janice, cause we can see.
Oh, Janet was, oh, was she, was she virtual last time?
Yeah, some do have two binders left, okay, awesome.
I'll go there.
Does anyone else have something they wanna talk about? No, but I don't wanna go off. Do you wanna stay, we can find something else to talk about. I usually do have a lot to say.
I guess we make a motion to end the meeting at seven twenty-nine.
A adjournment, adjournment meeting at, what, seven thirty, yeah.
Seven thirty.
Anybody wanna second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, there, motion, okay, thank you.
Janice.
I seconded.
So, we all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay.